Good evening. This meeting of June 24, 2013, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Kruger?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Strelow?
Present.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted with removal of item number three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted with the deletion of item number three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel report as submitted.
Second. Moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the personnel report as submitted. Any discussion?
Where is that? Where -- that is right after shooting. So we're not approving the agenda? We moved --
We already did.
Oh, we did approve the agenda. Okay.
Remember when you said aye?
Cut the tape and start over.
I'll hit item one in the left-hand bar. Should be.
All right, got it. Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to approve the personnel report as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the food service employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the
Agreement.
The agreement with the food service employees as presented. Any discussion?
Is there any comments about
Nature of that?
Nature of the agreement?
There was just language in that. There was no language in that contract. It was just over money and insurance. So we have
So the conversation was right in line with where we were with the rest of the unions as far as the salaries go. So really, not anything We did have some conversations about the new Obamacare and so how we're restructuring and trying to keep the hours down for certain employees who are already below 30 hours. We actually didn't, I don't believe we're cutting any hours for any of those people, but we're going to keep a watchful eye because this will be our look-back period during the 13, 14 school year will be the period that they're going to look at to determine whether or not those people are 30 hours or more.
Because I would just add that Rick and his group, Kevin Kelleher and the folks in the business office have spent an unbelievable amount of time in the last two weeks since we found out what allowable growth would be for next year with all of our unions. All of our contracts are being negotiated at this time. So you will see several tonight and several more in the relatively near future as we near completion and prepare for next school year.
What kind of salary range or settlement range with these contracts falling in?
Yeah, so this one is 32 cents per hour. That is a total package because, you know, when we negotiate, we talk about total package. And so when we talk about a percentage, we talk about the total increase in that employee group for the following year. So that includes health insurance premium increases. It includes any IFRS changes that might be included for that following year. It also, in this case, includes additional fees called PACA fees, which come under the Affordable Healthcare Act. And so there are those additional costs. So as a total package percentage, this package is 3.67 percent, so just under 3.7 percent, which translates into 32 cents per hour and then all those other changes that I mentioned. It's a relatively small group, 121 employees that run the food service for the district.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented. Any discussion?
Once again, can we have the
Summary.
Summary is almost identical to what we have with food service. Much smaller group there. I believe there are, Kevin, is it nine?
Eight.
Eight. Eight people that are in that bargaining unit. So it's a smaller group. Right in line with the same process as far as what we went through with them and right in line with where we were with the other unions as far as percentage settlement. And again, the package does include the PACA fees that Stan referred to as well in addition to the insurance increase for those individuals. But again, we weren't talking about language with this group. This was just insurance and a total package as far as the cost is concerned.
Yes, the one thing I always like to emphasize is the fact that whole total package, and again, a lot of times when you read or hear about other groups, whether they be public employees or private organizations, they tend to report only the percentage of salary increase and we always report total package increase, which is a significant difference.
Were there any IFRS changes this year?
There's an increase in IFRS this year.
There was an increase in IFRS.
It goes up a small increase, but otherwise, IFRS laws as far as what government has -- I don't believe any changes there.
Kevin, do you know roughly percentage of salary increase?
It's right around 8.9 percent now for the employees.
I'm sorry, I wasn't talking about IFRS. The 41 cents per hour
3.68 is what it says.
Is a total package, but I guess I wanted to get to the salary increase, which is probably closer to 2 percent.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
Right. But the 3.68 includes salary, healthcare, and the IFRS increases.
Correct, and the PACA fees.
And the PACA fees.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education cancel the purchase contract with Seneca Data for end computing approved on June 10, 2013.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education cancel the purchase contract with Seneca Data for end computing approved on June 10, 2013. Discussion?
Absolutely. Well, at the last board meeting, we asked you to approve a purchase of a virtual desktop situation for our labs. There are 58, 59 labs that we are redoing this summer. And we ran a pilot using a virtual desktop situation, which is, and I will get some of the technicalities wrong here, basically multiple computers using one tower or one PC, basically. And for a long time, we had some relatively good success with that, but as we neared the end of the school year, we ran it through harder trials and found that it struggled to do, to keep up when streaming video or when we have large numbers of students doing standardized testing. So we moved forward with the resolution for purchase at the same time as we were finalizing our pilot so that we would be ready to execute that as soon as July 1 rolled around, as soon as we were into the next fiscal year. And so there was a little bit of an overlap before we finalized the pilot and when we made the purchase, we wanted to be in a situation that would move ahead quickly. At the end of the pilot, I visited, as well as others of the executive staff, many of our schools, had conversations with our teaching staff as well as principals. And the pilot just simply didn't provide the level of experience we wanted for our students. So we've had some other conversations about ways that we can do this better. And we are looking at, and you will see some recommendations later, to look at a it's called a tiny, so I'm not using untechnical terms when I say that, but basically a tiny, which will be mounted behind the screen of a computer. But then each PC will, or each computer will act as its own PC. So it gives us much greater power. It comes at additional expense. I believe they're about $150 per computer and more. But the end user experience, the ability for it to keep up with changes in websites and video and all those things that are important to education is much, much greater. Our IT department has spent a lot of time with this and they are recommending that we move in this direction and away from the virtual desktop environment. And I concur. I think that that's a good recommendation and the folks who have used that in the pilot are much more positive about it than things ended up with the virtual desktop. So before we overcommitted or went down a path we were not going to be satisfied with, we wanted to back up and do the right thing.
Any other questions? I would point out that I believe our agreement with Seneca indicated that we reserve the right to alter the purchase.
Correct. The purchase order was never executed.
Correct.
That was held until we had everything finalized. And so it all kind of collided and the bid gives us some flexibility in numbers that we would order or if. And we do have some on hand that we've purchased to do our pilot with and we will find ways to repurpose those and ensure that they are used in a way that they were meant to.
There are, yeah, there are applications where those can be certainly deployed throughout the district.
Absolutely.
Not put us in a situation where we've got technology in the hands of students and teachers that isn't performing.
Absolutely. In a lab, our labs, you know, one of our priority uses for the lab is with the new testing, not the new testing, but the testing that we do, which is more and more, the standardized test is computerized. And that's one of the areas that struggle. We certainly can't put our students at a disadvantage by having them taking standardized tests on the technology that doesn't facilitate that very well. So there are other uses in our media centers or such where we deploy those 200 units that we own and they'll perform just fine because it's not the same level of density of use. And quite honestly, it's not as high level of rigor, or of If it doesn't work, the outcome's not quite as important as if it messes up the standardized test.
You were looking for some cool technology
Whatever word I was looking for
None of us are going to understand anyway, but we know that if it works or it doesn't work.
Right.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Just a question, just a clarification. The end computing and client hardware, software and support management software, is that in lieu of, meaning that's gone, I get that. Then you have these new tiny devices, but the difference in price is some $480,000.
Correct.
So is it, these two things are being exchanged?
Correct.
But at an additional cost of nearly half a million dollars.
That's correct.
So what does that do, I know that's one cent sales tax.
Yep.
What does that do to our projections relative to the availability of funds going down the road?
So we have maintained all of our purchases inside of the $3.5 million that the board set aside for our technology plan. So this will not cost additional dollars outside of that. So it won't have impact on purchases outside of our technology plan. What it will likely do is, if you remember in our technology, we had indicated that we would have deployed 1,200 tablets by the end of next year. Well, based on the reduction in the cost of those tablets and some other efficiencies we were able to find, we had hoped to make that 1,200 be closer to 2,000. Well, now with this, it's going to offset and we will be back at the 1,200 mark, which was the plan in the beginning. And those other tablets will not be purchased because we will be purchasing these tines, which will give us a better. So our plan will stay on track as written. We had hoped to go well beyond the 1,200, but that likely won't be able to happen for next year. But that's okay. That's where we were at in full of planning purposes anyway. So the costs or the opportunity cost is in fewer tablets than we had hoped, but still the number we had talked about in our technology plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve a purchase contract with, and then we weren't given
Two Trees Technology.
Two Trees Technology.
That is page eight and nine of the tab.
Okay.
Take a look at that. That was added. That was a late, by the way, convinced coming on Friday. So that is the company that had the lowest quote, I believe, was the Two Trees Technology LLC.
Okay, for the, with, purchase contract with Two Trees Technology for Lenovo Tiny Devices.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a purchase contract with Two Trees Technology LLC for Lenovo Tiny Devices. Discussion, any more discussion?
I guess I could jump in really quickly. The tiny will mount behind the screen in the same way that the virtual desktop would. It will run the same programs. It will perform better, quicker, able to do better streaming. But as far as the end user goes, there's no difference. It's not that the, now the teachers have to learn another program or another operating system or somehow it will change the design of our labs. Really, for the end user, it's seamless. It's just something else behind the screen that's powering the technology.
Two Trees Technology is from where?
That I don't know.
I take they're not local, then?
They are not local.
Are they Iowa? Are they Iowa?
Kevin?
I'm just trying to figure out why there's such a drastic difference if the tiny is the program that we're going to put in. There's such a discrepancy, like $40,000 or something like that. That's a lot of money. It's just a
From my understanding on that, Otto, is the Lenovo District, Lenovo would only allow packages of like 500 of them purchased by these other four vendors, where Two Trees was able to get a package where they can buy the whole 1,150 at the same price. The other four were limited to 500 at a certain price and then they had to pay one more for a full bag.
For another 500.
Two Trees was able to just secure a deal with a distributor for the whole amount at the lower price. That's why they were cheaper.
Do you think maybe they're possibly like considered a preferred distributor or something where they've got just better experience in working with Lenovo or something?
Could be. That was the explanation we had from Two Trees as to why their price was lower.
And they're from where, then?
We can Google them quick. That'll take me about three hours to figure out how to Google them.
Don't push anything on your screen.
Whole thing's going to blow up if I try and Google.
That was quick. Thank you.
That's why she's vice president.
Exactly right.
I think that's our first Google in the There you go. Let's keep it.
Where are the other four? Where are the other four?
Is there, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move the Board of Education approve the purchase contract with TC Networks for tablet imaging.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a purchase contract with TC Networks for tablet imaging. Any discussion?
As we purchase tablets, they come into the district, they need to be uploaded with an image and added to our system or our domain, I think is the right term. I see some shaking heads. So we don't, one way to do that is to purchase it at the time of purchasing the tablet, which as far as the image goes, we'd still have to add it to the domain ourselves. So one of our priorities has to find ways to incorporate local vendors. And this is one way that we can do that. They have the ability to image those tablets very quickly, add them to our domain and get them into the carts and deliver them, or I'm not sure if we're delivering or if they're delivering to, we're going to deliver them for insurance purposes and transportation to the building. So it's a way to utilize local services and have a more efficient result.
And I would chime in. You and I had a conversation about this and I think it's great, you know, you were able to determine that in essence, to keep that part of the business locally here, we could get competitive beds, competitive enough bids from our local companies, that it made sense to keep the business right here in Dubuque and in Iowa when we could. So that's, that's, that's great.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Brings us to the featured event this evening, the strategic plan update.
Great. And Mike, we're going to check the lines. So we talked about in several of our subcommittees, how we, how would we report our progress on the strategic plan? What was accomplished this year? And as importantly, what will be accomplished next year? And so we really tried to break this down into, into two phases. The first is this year, the 1213, and we're going to go through several bullet points about the 1213 school year and where I believe we have accomplished some significant movement within the district. And then next year, we'll talk about what our year of planning, which is what we're calling the 1213 school year, will play out for our students, for our staff, for our parents, for the boards. We really tried to focus next year on what will I see or experience differently if I'm a student, a parent, teacher, an administrator, a board member. So first, we'll start with the, this year, and what have we accomplished or what have we planned? And I really do think it's important to reemphasize that we want to be very purposeful and make sure everybody was on the same page to give us a strategic plan that's usable, actionable. You know, we've all been through strategic planning before. Oftentimes, this, this far after the fact, nine months later, it's pretty difficult to figure out where that strategic plan is or what it called us to do. And so we're trying to stay focused on our strategic plan on a, on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. So one of the major accomplishments, I believe, of this year is to launch a new strategic plan and complete a district-wide rollout and implementation phase. The second accomplishment of this year is develop a long-term technology plan to increase student access to technology, prepare educators to incorporate these tools into instruction. While it hasn't been perfect, it certainly is a good guiding document. We will begin implementing our strategic technology plan on July 1. A lot of the purchases are wrapped around dollars that become available for us after the fiscal year at the end of June. And so again, a planning document that we have been hard at work beginning the implementation phase this summer. The wireless will be upgraded throughout 100% of the district. That will be done yet this summer. The labs, the 59 labs, at the one per elementary school, one per house at the middle school, one per department at the high school, and the digital literacy labs also at the middle school. So all kind of come back to that next year when we talk about what we're going to implement next year or after July 1. But I wanted to point out that this, this document is kind of what has kept us focused in moving that forward. I think it's going to be a major game changer for our students next year. We also, as you have seen, developed a plan for future building projects utilizing one cent sales tax funding. So we incorporated the technology. We talked about the ongoing building projects. We set aside some money budgetarily to look at senior in the, in the future as well as an aquatic center and other projects. So again, staying with that theme of planning, we need to be purposeful as we move forward and sometimes it takes, you know, six, eight, nine, 12 months to plan it so that we can be. We also initiated discussion of a community aquatic center and started a feasibility study, so talking about our work with other entities, specifically the city in that case. We implemented the Iowa Core Language Art Standards using LEAD 21, reading curriculum district-wide, grades K through five. We increased the frequency and consistency of communication with all stakeholders. As you know, Mike Seiz and his team have done an excellent job of making sure that whether it's weather-related or whether it's, you know, a variety of things, we are communicating electronically with our stakeholders through, through relatively frequent emails. And we don't want to overdo it so that people tune us out, but, but when it's important, as well as texts and phone messages. So we have heard from many of our stakeholders, whether they be teachers or parents, that the communication, they feel more in the loop as to what's happening with the district or when there are emergency situations. Develop new and continue existing involvement in community initiatives aligned with the district's strategic plan. So that speaks to the fact that this morning I was the guest reader at the, at the third grade reading initiative summer school program with 47, 48 students who are enrolled in that program. And it's going to hopefully be, that's, it's a great collaboration between a lot of elements within the, within the community and we'll get to that later as well. And then focus on creating a greater sense of collaboration across the district. One of the things that I think I shared with, with the board when I started this position is I felt a need to drive home the idea of collaboration, that buildings weren't sort of out there on their islands by themselves, but that there be a feeling of collaboration, of give and take within the district, whether it be at the administrative level, teacher level, but also from the, from the school board level, parent level. You know, one of the things that you'll see at your desk is a copy of a book, one of the things we're going to, we talked about the end of our year as an administrative team was how do we continue to encourage people to think outside the box, or in this case to poke the box and to, to make sure everybody feels invited? I think I stole yours, Mike. So those are sort of the big picture issues where I believe we've been successful this year. And it's really in planning for next year and setting the right cultural experience so that everyone feels part of a team, everyone feels they have an ability to be heard and a right to be heard, that good ideas come from a variety of ways and that there are avenues to express those, those ideas, whether they come from a building principal or whether they come from a teacher to a building principal to the forum. But that we have, that we are actively trying to create that environment. I know it doesn't happen in one year, may take some time and the proof will be in the pudding. They'll bring forth ideas and they'll wait and see if they gain any traction, but, but they will. And so those are sort of where I believe we have accomplished some, some big goals during the 1213 school year. So that's really the front of your sheet. Initially, we had talked about just presenting the, the back of your sheet. We thought, well, no, we need to back up and talk about this year. What were the, what were the major accomplishments of this year? And you'll see a lot of it has to do with planning. So the next year has to be about implementation. It's easy to plan. It's easy to, I shouldn't say it's easy to plan, but it's easy to get stuck in the habit of planning and never bring things to fruition or never to execute. Mike tells me not to use the word execute, to implement the plan that has been, has been developed. So now what I want to do is move into the 1314 and then talk about the priority initiatives and how we're going to implement those. So if you remember our strategic plan, I'm sure you all do, and then you remember our strategic plan update that we gave you last time in mid-winter, it had a lot of data and statistics, some of which we had current data, some of which we were taking a year to develop that data. And so what I'm going to share with you tonight is not the data. That will come next year when we report out again in our yearly cycle. What I want to report is that step below the data. In other words, what are we going to do differently to begin to improve that data? It's one thing to look at the numbers, but it's also important to look at what are the steps that we take proactively as a district to improve that data? And some of these things are easier to implement than others, but we're committed to figuring out how do we move that, that data forward. So that's what I want to start with tonight and certainly open to questions as we go. I know I can tend to talk too much, so as we get moving forward, please feel free to stop me. Okay. We are going to start, we'd like to start with student development. We, you'll see that we moved student achievement to the end because we believe that everything that we're going to talk about in our other four goal areas supports or improves student achievement. So we want to wait and talk about that at the end. So I thought I would go through and talk about the three, four, in some cases, five major initiatives under each of the goal areas and just paint a little bit of picture on how we believe that will increase student achievement or student involvement. So the first one is student development. And under the major actions you'll see is offering activities bus. It provides transportation to six, 12 students participating in extracurricular activities or offerings. Amy Hawkins and members of this board, as well as athletic directors and coaches, met as an activities council to talk about what are the barriers, what are our participation numbers, but what are the barriers, what resources can we provide to overcome those barriers to increase student participation? And they've created a list of multiple steps that they'd like to see taken, but top priority brought forward by that group was to offer this activities bus. So that's an example of what I talked about earlier, is how are we incorporating into our, our daily life or how we, we do business in the district based on what different committees or groups have come forward with those ideas? So, and the whole point is more students will have access to after-school activities. So at some point in the fall, we'll invite Amy to come and talk about the nuts and bolts and maybe Chris Hall as well, our transportation director. But the concept is pretty simple. We have far too many students, we believe, who don't participate in athletics, band, debate, you name the activity, because they simply can't get home unless they ride the bus home after school. The solution is The solution is, or potential solution is, to offer an activities bus that leaves at a predictable time every night, 5:30, 5:45, so that coaches and sponsors know, look, I've got to have students out of here by 5:30 so they can catch the bus and get home. So it's just an opportunity to increase. And it is, you know, it'll be a first attempt, so it is a pilot to degree. I hate to use the word pilot because it indicates a small trial. We will be doing this in all of our middle school and high schools next year. And at the end of the year, we'll review how many students accessed this and did our participation numbers go up or did they not?
That's a big deal, by the way.
It's bigger than it probably seems at first glance.
You've talked about that a lot, Stan, and our high school coaches and some middle school folks have talked about that a lot. And you take a kid, you look at Hempstead's district, for example, it goes all the way down by the river, doesn't it, in some spots?
Yeah.
It cuts way on the north side of the downtown area. That's a five, six mile jaunt for a kid. And if they don't have transportation, this really creates opportunity.
Absolutely. And it won't be door-to-door, as you can imagine. It'll stop and, you know, it'll get folks within a reasonable walking distance of home, but it'll certainly open the doors, we hope, we believe, to participating. We believe that students who are tied to school outside of the normal school day have a much better experience and tend to do better academically. And so an activities bus translates into, we believe, better academic performance and better student achievement. Ready to move on? The second bullet there is launch a challenging behavior team to support K-8 student success. So what does that mean? Currently, when we have students who have significant or challenging behaviors, we utilize an AEA behavior support team. I believe there is one, maybe two teams in the entire AEA. I'm hearing one. And the wait time for that is anywhere from three to six months from the time the issue is identified. Because of some changes in dropout prevention, we were looking at different ways of spending our dropout prevention dollars as well as pulling forward some special education dollars to support students. And so what we will be doing is launching our own behavior, challenging behavior team. We will be hiring folks who have certain expertise outside of the classroom to help teachers, support teachers in helping those students be successful in their, in the classroom, but also having a wide range or continuum of opportunities to help those students. It just simply isn't acceptable for the student who is struggling or experiencing those challenged behaviors. And quite honestly, it's difficult for the staff and the other students in the room. And so by controlling or having our own team, the response time will be much shorter, in a matter of days as opposed to months. Number two, or three, I'm sorry, pilot the reporting of performance character in middle school to middle school parents. And so eventually, we'll move that to the elementary and the high school, potentially all within the 13, 14 school year, but we're going to start the year with middle school. So that's why that is highlighted there and not the elementary and the high school yet because, just in case we would have some bumps in the road. Currently, all of our elementary schools utilize, my form here somewhere, different programs, basically, I think it's limited to four, Character Counts, Leader and Me, Two by Two, and I'm missing another one. Prescott has, Nancy?
PBIS.
PBIS positive.
That counts as.
And most of them, quite honestly, utilize two. All of our schools use Two by Two to some degree, all 13 of our elementary schools do. And so we wanted to have a system by which we reported out that performance. And sometimes that performance has to do with academic performance, the idea of leadership and studying hard and doing your homework and those types of things. But there are other pieces that will be woven into that as well. So the idea that it, that, you know, what is counted matters or what matters is counted kind of philosophy. So the idea that is that we needed to start to report to parents in a standardized way how we believe their students are performing and character-wise.
You talked about the schools that are using said programs. I just want to make note that the Two by Two that is being used is done by volunteers. It is not paid for by the district, and it is paid for through donations through the community that bring these people and the resources into the schools to do that. So it's a volunteer thing that is provided through a community partner.
Yep. Yeah, my, all three of my children have been through that. In fact, I think my seventh grader, it'd be embarrassed for me to say, but pretty sure she still has Scooby Doo, her dog, somewhere.
Which is their beginning program that they started, which they have way more developed stuff.
Yep, it's an ongoing program. So that is where we're at with student development. Certainly there, again, we're not reporting out everything that we'll do under student development. We want to highlight sort of the bigger ideas, or as Tom would say, the big hairy deal or the big, you know, the bigger goals. And these are things that we want to say, tell the public, you know, this is televised, this is what you'll see differently next year. This is something you'll experience differently next year. So that's what we're trying to focus on. Community engagement. Offer college math courses at senior in Hempstead. A group of parents approached the district earlier this year with the idea or a request that we look at how their most advanced mathematicians access advanced or college-level math courses, and was there a way to do that on campus, therefore allowing them to take more courses within the high school, that sort of thing. So that was studied, looked into, parents were met with, the local colleges and universities were given an opportunity sort of to respond to that. And we were able to put together a situation where I think about 16 or 17 students first semester and 12 or more second semester will gain college-level, advanced college-level math coursework. And so I believe it's seven hours, seven semester hours of credit they'll attain on our campus next year if they take both classes. Questions regarding to that one? Okay. Number two, provide planning, facilities, and technology support for the inaugural summer reading academy as part of the community-wide third-grade reading initiative. Again, it has not been our tradition to open our doors to outside agencies, at least not very common in the summertime. And there is, as you all know, great synergy around the idea of third-grade reading initiative and a summer academy. And we were approached as to, hey, you've got these buildings and they're air-conditioned and there's technology in there and there's a lunchroom there and a gym there. Could we partner with this? And so certainly, our portion of that is important. There are many other folks bringing things to the table, the Community Foundation, Every Child Every Promise, St. Mark's. There's a variety of entities who are working hard to make this happen. So it's good that the school district can play an important role in that.
I hope they have the resources to be able to expand it.
Yeah.
You know, beyond one building.
Yeah. It'll be interesting. I was there, as I mentioned, this morning. I was there last week and then back this morning and only started with 48 students. And I thought, I wonder what attendance looks like on Monday of week two? And I think other than a handful of students, they had very good attendance. So I think we'll see, hopefully that can continue. I know that the weather's not great outside, but the kids were excited this morning. They were doing reading activities this morning and going to the pool this afternoon. So it's not just academic, it's about providing kids with other summertime experiences that they may or may not have access to on their own. Next year, engage parents and families in a district-wide effort to promote the importance of regular school attendance, also part of the third-grade reading initiative. One of the things, we've had some pilots going on, and so we'll learn from those pilot programs as what are best practices. It's also going to be the focus of our public service announcement campaign. If you remember last fall, it was about stop arms and buses, and Bruce Braley and other folks participated in that. We're going to have a similar campaign this year aimed at parents, really encouraging the importance of regular daily attendance in school and how lack of important regular attendance has an extremely detrimental effect on students' participation. We also have, and I think that's going to be mentioned a little bit later as well, Maricourt Vista, who will be working specifically with daily attendance as well. So that's a collaborative effort between the city and the school district to hire vistas.
I hope that doesn't mean that we will get too heavy-handed with parents and families if they want to get out of school for a day for something that's.
No, I think it's, I think it's a matter of common sense to a degree. I mean, looking at patterns, are there patterns of, you know, am I missing a day a week for the entire year, or am I missing the first week of the month? I mean, it's really looking at patterns. It's not, certainly the intent to be aimed at, you know, and it's also aimed at parental education. You know, that's going to be the largest focus is parental education and not the heavy-handed, you know, showing up at the door and throwing a kid in the van and dropping them to school.
Yeah, I think it is. It's more helping educate, in this case, the parents about what the trade-off is. And there's always going to be situations, like you say, Tom, when they need to, when they need to be out. But I think there's also responsibility, you know, and it's our job to let them know what impact that has over the long run with trends that lead to higher absentee. And I don't know that everybody necessarily connects the dots with respect to that, to know how it impacts student achievement and the ability of our teachers and administrators and others to really kind of move that young person through our, through our district.
So you'll notice in the.
Like one of the things we would look for is kids who miss, kids who miss more than 10 days of school in the first 30 days of school. I mean, that's not just taking your kid out one day, or that's not that family gathering that might be important for you. But, you know, if you're starting your school year out in the first 30 days and you've missed a third of it, that's someone that we want to have a conversation with to see if there's an appropriate intervention.
Just so everybody understands at a building level, I mean, we've, Tammy and I have talked about this, stories of occasionally at the building level, parents exhibiting concerns that it was difficult to make sure that they could get their kid out of class because they had a family event going on without having exhibited a pattern of any kind of, you know, absenteeism. So I just hope that it's clear that this does not give carte blanche to be heavy-handed and interfere with the sanctity of the family, because I'm a family guy. I have families, you know, I do understand, I totally understand the attendance thing, I get that. But when it's all said and done, you know, the families need to be able to navigate the school district as well for their kids when it comes to certain events, certain things going on in their families.
Tom, from what I've understood, and because I agree with you on that, but it's more geared towards, like Lynn was saying, parents that just don't get up with their kids and get them to school.
Right.
And for whatever reason, those kids don't know, because they don't have the parental guidance to say, you need to go to school. Time goes by, it's 11 o'clock, and nobody's said, you know, why aren't you in school? So I think it's more geared for, you know, chronic absenteeism and to know why. And it's at the early, you know, early childhood ages, it's just as important.
And our focus, you'll see in the lime green, says parents will be educated on why attendance matters. But it's also, our focus will be on initially, how do we help? You know, what resources are available? What are things that either we or the community or, what's a way, what's the problem? And is there a way we can help you alleviate that issue and get your child to school on time? And it is as much a matter of tardiness as it is actual missing whole days. I mean, we have, you know, some families who the time doesn't, it's not as much of a focus. And so being a half an hour, 45 minutes, an hour late most days, it seems to be acceptable because they're in school every day. Well, if you miss your first hour or most of your first hour every day, there's still a lack there, especially if it's, you know, reading time or something like that. Implement the state Mets grant to better prepare special education students to be college and career-ready. Focus will be on decreasing dropouts and increasing employability of special education students. And that is, Mets stands, we're going to write it down, Model Employment Transition Site. So I believe we are one of two places in the state of Iowa that has this grant to focus on helping our students make that transition, our special education students in particular make that transition either to college or a career. So that'll be, provide a level of service to those students. And then partner with the city of Dubuque, the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque, and utilize Maricourt Vista volunteers to implement joint priorities. So there are three Vista staff members that were funded to implement initiatives of the third-grade reading campaign. Those are jointly written requests or grants. So again, it just goes to the collaboration of how we as entities, in this case, the city and the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque are working together to bring resources to our students that will help them be more successful. Effective resource management, we've talked about this at length. Update 59 computer labs and add over 1,000 tablets. That number will be 1,200. New lab furniture and enhance wireless access across the district through the technology plan. So we planned it, we've set aside the resources, the board has approved the use of $3.5 million worth of one-cent sales tax dollars to give us the ability to execute this plan or to implement this plan. And the outcome will be, students will see or use significantly more technology in classrooms that are designed to accommodate that use. At the middle school, high school level, and particularly, there will be much greater access to technology. Some of that will be in place the very first day of school, and some of that will be staged over the first several months as we make purchases or wire labs or furniture comes in. It's interesting, you can order all the technology you want and have it in about three or four days, order furniture, and it's a two-month wait. So, you know, there's some of those things are, that will all happen throughout the course of the year. Most of it will happen at the very early stages of the year. Enhance facilities with a priority on the Hempstead renovation, Kennedy renovation, and others. So new learning spaces will better meet facility needs for educating students. So again, that's the, that's the long-term plan for the one-cent sales tax dollars and how we utilize those dollars that thankfully the taxpayers voted for. I believe we've had almost 10 years now, and we've done some phenomenal things for the kids, and Dubuque can continue down that path. And then Kevin's favorite, launch a new finance system on July 1st. 24/7 access to up-to-date information from anywhere within internet access. So moving into a much more accessible, reliable, and up-to-date finance system. Kevin, I don't know if you want to throw anything on that?
These are frontline, which have increased greatly over the past system.
So moving forward, and you know, and it's all those behind-the-scenes things. We tend to focus on what's in it for kids and parents, but there are the realities of having to run a business operation that has 1,700 employees and a, you know, well over $100 million budget. And so keeping our technologies and our systems up to date there is important as well. And how does that implement student achievement? It implements student achievement because we can be more effective with our allocation of resources and make sure that we are utilizing them as many of those dollars as possible in an efficient and effective way to, you know, increase educational experiences. Employ excellence. So expand the 21st century learning groups to 72 secondary teachers. These are the teachers who will be going through multi-day, days of training, much of which happens embedded into their classroom, so it's not a matter of they're being pulled from the classroom. But these are the 72 teachers who will be receiving tablet access and card access. Our goal is to have at least one per house at the middle school and the remainder being at the high school. So it's an opportunity to utilize the technology that we're purchasing. We know that purchasing the technology is obviously just the first step. It's the, how does life look differently for kids? How do they experience, how does their educational experience change because they've had the technology? And so that comes with a professional development requirement for our staff. So it'll be 72, moving the group to 72 or expanding to 72 next year, and then the following year, I believe we have on tap for 50 or so, or, and so we'll continue down that process until we get everybody through that training.
And just in case somebody's struggling with the math, because we know that 72 represents, you know, less than 10% of probably our staff. We talked about how you start to populate buildings and departments with technology champions in addition to what our technology coaches do, so that there's a resource for teachers who perhaps have not been a part of the first couple of classes, if you may, to be able to make sure they're benefiting from technology.
Absolutely. We'll continue to move forward with technology, professional development for all teachers provided by our technology coaches, which we have one in every building. But to give you an idea of the scope, you look at 72, and that's a great question because we have 850 teachers. And so does that, is it just a drop in the bucket? But if I'm a middle school student at Roosevelt, Jefferson, or Washington, you know, I'll use Roosevelt as an example, I currently have two labs, okay? So the opportunity to utilize computers. So the opportunity to utilize computers at Roosevelt is the number of teachers there by two labs and a handful of computers in the back of classrooms. Next year, there'll be, there's roughly 120 students in a house. So next year, there will be a lab with 30 computers in it for that 120 students. And there will be a cart in each house, and that cart will have a number of computers in 25 to 30. And so now I have 60 user endpoints in a house with 120 students. So you can see, it's not an all-day everything, it's certainly not one-to-one. But the goal is, as a teacher has need to access that technology, it's available to them. So we have moved it from two opportunities in the entire building to two opportunities in every house. And that same will play itself out at Jefferson and Washington. At the high school, each department, nine departments, each department will have a lab assigned to them, so the foreign language, the math, the science. So they'll have their department lab, and then they'll have other teachers who are trained to use the technology. So our hope is to get more, to impact as many students as possible with technology on a daily or weekly basis. When we move into year two, that 50 will be focused almost entirely at the high school because we'll be at the scenario that I mentioned at the middle school, which is pretty adequate. Now we're adding more to the high school. So we really are, in a two-year period, making significant strides in access for technology for students. And then the end goal, four years out, is to have enough teachers through this training, enough tablets, both previously purchased and newly purchased, to go to a one-to-one scenario at the high school level. So we can't get there overnight, but we certainly are making significant movement forward there. Beginning implementation of the Iowa Teacher Quality Initiative based on the state reform measures, including peer review and teacher leadership opportunities. We believe that teacher leadership is important in Dubuque. It has been for many years. We're kind of ahead of the state curve there with our technology coaches and our instructional coaches and some of our other teachers on special assignment. So we want to move forward with these initiatives based on the state reform, partially because we've already been down that path, we want to continue to push that forward. And partially because when the funding, there's additional funding available to schools who meet some of these requirements. And so we will want to be aggressive in attaining that additional funding if it meets the needs of our school district, as much as potentially $300 per student. With 10,000 students, that math's pretty easy to do. That's not something that we can ignore. So we'll want to make sure that we are pushing, be on the cutting edge of that, so that when those dollars become available, we can capitalize on that.
Is that a 14, 15 event where those dollars become available?
Yes. So districts will apply, and I can't remember the total number of dollars that they allocated at the state level for that. Do you remember, Kevin? There are three different, it's staged over three years. And so we would like to be part of that first-year initiative if we can. And so looking at that guidance, which is familiar with the legislative process, they put it out, and it's the guidance that comes out over the next three, four, five months that really has the detail. So we'll be looking for that guidance and trying to coordinate our programming to meet that guidance so that we can capitalize on those dollars. And then an interesting new grant, the STEP grant, will be used to train 612 staff on issues surrounding sexual violence. And so that is, it's relatively brief training. It's a small training that we're going to do through a grant, but it is kind of in the realm of bullying and harassment, but in this case focuses specifically on dating violence and those types of issues. So again, creating an employee, an excellent employee workforce. Expanding, or, okay, I've moved on to student achievement. So expanding alternative education support with additional life coach, tech coach, and counselor at the ALC Connect, and launching a new 10th grade at-risk program. I mentioned earlier that we were looking at the challenging behavior team. Well, this is another way that we are going to be using some dollars from our dropout prevention fund. As we talked about earlier in the year, the state changed some of those requirements, and so we had to adjust how we spent dropout prevention dollars. You also know that we have a relatively strong graduation rate when compared to cities of our size nationally and in Iowa, but it's not good enough. I mean, we still have far too many of our students who don't make it to graduation. So here's a way that we're going to, that in partnership with our dropout prevention programs that are always already in place and some of the outreach things that Shirley's been working on, we'll hopefully see an increase in not only student achievement, but in our graduation rate, which is an important number for us. Implement a new eighth-grade digital literacy curriculum. So you've heard me, I can't say that five times too quick. So you've heard me talk about the technology labs in each house, and you've heard me talk about the tablet and the carts in each house. Well, in addition to that, we are putting in one room or two rooms, is it two rooms at Roosevelt, Kevin?
Three.
Three at Roosevelt, two at each of the others. Designed specifically for digital literacy curriculum. And what does that mean? So if you follow on the lime green there, eighth graders will gain new collaboration, presentation, and communication skills needed to prepare them for high school and beyond. So how do I use technology to collaborate? How do we use technology to make presentations? Most of the eighth graders after next year won't do a simple PowerPoint the way I'm doing it. They'll have bells and whistles and probably do a prezi, and, you know, I'll have to take that class so I can continue to present to the board. So that's another opportunity where we'll ensure all of our students have access to technology at the eighth-grade level. Integrate the Common Core with response to intervention to identify and respond to the learning and behavior challenges. So this is a process by which we, if you remember on the strategic plan, and I should have handed out copies of the plan, one of the things we have talked about is how do we individualize education for all students and at all levels? And so this response to intervention is one way that we do that. An outcome should be fewer of our students ending up entitled in special education classes. It should allow us to individualize our response to the needs and helping those students before they become identified and find themselves in a special education environment. So it is sort of that mid-step of going from this is a struggling student, potentially headed towards special education. Well, what, how do we back up and go through a very systematic process to help these students before they find themselves identified as a special education student? So the outcome will be lower numbers in special education. I guess that was my last slide. So I can certainly back up to any of those goal areas, but what we wanted to present tonight was what have we done this year? And again, that focuses a lot on planning, but more specifically, what are we going to do next year? What's the implementation piece? We need to move from research to implementation. And so every one of these things will happen next year, and we will report out to you next year what that success is with those programs.
Stan? I've got some comments, and I guess I wanted to kind of take us back to the board when we talked about strategic planning last fall. And I guess, I would say I like this process. I think, I like where we've, that we've got a plan. I like the way that's reporting. And I just wanted to go through some of the themes we talked about last year and, you know, how those may or may not be in our current plan. One of the themes from last year was empowering the teacher-student relationship. And how can we free up teachers from things administratively or whatever they're doing, things that may not have been initiatives five years ago that aren't as effective as we thought they'd be? How do we free those teachers up from some of those programs? I think the term we used was weeding the garden. And so that was a theme that didn't make it onto our board here, but was something we talked about last year, or last fall. We talked about activities and the importance of activities. And I can tell the rest of the board that Amy Hawkins and Cheryl Warner, one of the things they did is they sent out a questionnaire and an email to all of the activity leaders in the district, got feedback, started saying, "Okay, these things are done, these things are being done, these things we're working on," and was a good first step as far as moving that process forward. I guess I still have, I pressed Cheryl on the fact that, you know, we just don't seem to have the numbers in band vocal music and some of those things that some of our other comparable districts do. And how do we get the resources, whether that's additional people or time in the calendar to have 270 people in the band like a lot of the MVC schools do? But that's, you know, we're making progress with that. We talked about innovation, and I think we're seeing a lot of examples of that. The technology plan hopefully will be something that helps lead towards innovation. Efficient resource management, I think of all the things we're doing, I'm the most pleased with how we're managing our resources, both human resources and financial resources, the capital plan for the buildings. I think I'm very happy with where we're at on that. We talked about partnering and community engagement, and while you shared examples, well, we talked about partnering and community engagement, and I think at the forum level we're doing that. One of the concerns I had is we talked a little, a lot about bottom-up. How do we engage the people at the building level, from the custodians to the administrators to the teachers, to live the strategic plan? And in all, pretty much all the examples you talked about here today, they were kind of forum-level initiatives going down. There weren't a lot of building-level initiatives coming up of how is TJ Potts living the strategic plan at Kennedy Elementary School? So that, I mean, I'm just throwing this out as one person's thoughts, you know, take them for what they were. There may be six people that think I'm crazy here, but those were some of the things that...
At least.
That, you know, struck me. And I think getting to, I'll know that we're really succeeding in a strategic plan when I see the people at the building level saying, "Here's how we're part, here's how the custodians at X school are partnering with the community to do a better job at what they do or to help student development." So those are...
On that point, I will let you know that in all of the buildings that I've been in, and I've been in several, on, either it's in the, usually it's like in the teacher's workroom or area, that strategic plan has blown up as big as the posters up on the wall over there. So they're looking at it. The principals are talking about it, everything that they do. So I'm just sharing with you that that part I know is happening. So I know that that is a working document that I see in the building.
It is. And so I know you haven't had a chance to look at this book because I just gave it, you just got it tonight. So take a look at that and know that that's how we ended our district leadership this year and how we'll begin our year next year. And some of the things we'll talk about when we do an all-staff gathering in August is how do we pull that up or how do you push that up if you're somebody out there with a good idea? You know, this book poked the box, and, you know, I know that there'll be some, it takes a little bit of a leap of faith to hand that out to people and say, "This is how we want you to operate," because it's a lot easier not to do it that way. But I believe, and I think the board believes, and from what you're saying, that that's not what they believe in. So that, this is, so this year was about getting a larger plan, which did come primarily from this group. But as we move forward in implementation, we do not only request, but we expect that leaders of all levels push forward those ideas and that leaders at all levels be receptive to the fact that people are going to have different ideas, opinions, and hopefully have creative thoughts on how we continue to improve. But I appreciate that.
Well, and the last, the last point I think I want to make is another big theme that we talked about last fall was character development programming. And we get, you know, sliced up into character development to behavior traits to leadership development. And I, you know, the two-by-two programs that are going on, and there's so many programs going on within the community that are stressing character development. I really think that is something that having a great, that we could really be known for in the Dubuque Community School District is our character development programs and our, especially at our elementary schools. And I know we have some schools that I've been in that have just tremendous programs, and some of them mix a number of these types of programs. But getting that to a point where it's, you know, I struggle between, you know, letting each principal do their own thing, having something that has some consistency. And I know we're probably taking a look at that, seeing what works and what doesn't work. But that character development, I think, is something that we all agreed as a board was a very important piece of the strategic plan, even though it doesn't say character development per se in the language, but...
Absolutely. I, we've had that same conversation because we have staffs who have, are very invested in their particular program. And that's really, to me, the key, that there's that buy-in on the implementation level by the teacher. I mean, some of these buildings, I mean, it's, you talk about buy-in from the, doesn't matter if it's food service, custodian, teacher, principal, and variety of programs, you know, as long as there's that implementation and that buy-in from the staff. And so I too struggle with the, how much of that should be, this is what you should do versus this is the goal and get to the goal. And I think where we kind of are trying to figure out how to juggle that is with the character development.
But I sense that there, you know, there's some core tenets in character, whatever you want to call it, program, character development, that are common in all of them. And I think one of the advantages for us in our district is to engage and mobilize in all of our buildings that support, that buy-in. I frankly don't care how they get there. I care that they get there. And so I'm more along the lines of setting the expectation that this happens. They know their staff, they know their students, they know their parent, you know, groups better than anybody at this table. So why not have them pick the program that, you know, that obviously that we vetted and have seen working in our buildings? Let them pick and choose those that are going to, again, are going to resonate best with the people that they're serving. And I, you know, what we don't, what isn't negotiable is that that is an initiative of ours and a goal of ours. How they get there, I'm less concerned with, just the fact that they bought into it, and the outcomes are exactly what we expect.
And the other thing I would like to, for us to look into down the road is what impact... My personal belief is, but I don't know that, how we would pull the data, is that extracurricular at the secondary level is instrumental in character development as far as leadership and work ethic and teamwork and communication with people all towards the accomplishment of a common goal. So, you know, I think at the elementary, we've got some pretty specific programming. It's different, but it's specific. At the secondary level, I don't know that we have specific programs as much as we count on, it's a lot of our co-curricular, extracurricular activities, and that's why I think it's so vital that those numbers come up, because I think that doesn't matter if your work ethic is around learning to play the violin or learning to throw a baseball. A lot of those, those core tenets are what'll make them successful adults is, "I've got to do it every day, I've got to be dedicated, and I've got to pay attention to the details. I can't just..." You know, a lot of those pieces are, you know, whether I'm playing in part of an orchestra or whether I'm playing in part of 11 people on a football field, those issues are pretty important to character development as well.
If I can offer a board salute, Tom Barton, who got all those tickets for the Barry Manilow concert and Cheryl Warner for orchestrating the bus trips. Getting 250 people to Cedar Rapids is like herding cats. But I did take advantage of the concert, went down with my family. And one of the things Barry Manilow said from stage was that, he went to the worst high school in America in Brooklyn, New York, and that he had a choice between going into sports, but he said he wasn't a good athlete, going into a gang and he wasn't a good fighter, or joining the orchestra. And he said, "Joining the high school orchestra is what made his life." So I think there's something to be said for that.
I will have to say, in conversations that I've had with Stan, I was very glad to hear him say that it is going to be a year of doing this coming year. Because I am, I for one, get very frustrated, and if I've learned one thing on being on the school board is it's very frustrating at how slow anything gets done because everything has to have data to back it up. And I am so sick of having to have data to back everything up. I want to be able to see some action happen. And let's see if, you know, go back to what we said at the very beginning, if you all, other six people remember, we said, "It's okay to try something and it doesn't work." And I really want us to be able to see that happen.
On my list.
Sorry, I stole your thunder. Sorry.
That was one of them.
But I just, I really, I really want to see the action, and you've laid it out. And so I'm excited to see what next year is going to bring, because I want to see this happening. But don't get, it's got to keep going. You can't get stuck with just this because if, we all know, there's lots of new things coming out. We got to be able to fit it in and just try, just try these things.
So you'll notice on the strategic plan, on the front, it says a year of planning, and on the back, it says a year of implementation. Now hopefully going forward, they're all years of both. In other words, we won't just implement next year, we'll still be planning. In other words, we won't just implement next year, we'll still be planning because the following year, we'll want to be implementing that. And so, you get into a cycle of doing both. It was important for me, quite honestly, is new in this role, to have a year for planning purposes to get everybody sort of, at least to consensus on strategic plan and the technology plan and facilities plan so that we're moving together purposefully. And so, I think there were certainly some doing this year, but it was more heavily on the planning. And as we get into that rotation, hopefully it's a, it's a better mix of both planning for upcoming years, but also that really seeable, feelable implementation so that it's not that cycle of planning.
And, you know, again, I think culture is so important and, you know, I think there's no better example for the extracurricular culture than, you know, Rick's old stomping grounds up there, up there at senior high school. I think, you know, there's a vibe around that campus right now that's very, very positive. You know, when I read the monthly newsletters or go to a basketball game or go to a football game, I thought the graduation was spectacular. There's a tremendous vibe with those kids. And, you know, again, I think Rick and the staff up there deserve a lot of credit and I guess probably the basketball team too. But, you know, it's, there's something special up there and that's neat and that you feel it when you, when you get around them.
Absolutely. And I think both were high schools are headed in that direction, certainly the good things
I'm not knocking him.
No, I understand. No, I understand. And, you know, as a former high school principal and Rick and David, you know, we all certainly know that in that, when your year starts off on a positive note because people are being successful for whatever reason, it just seems to bring the whole school along on a positive wave. But it doesn't matter if it's a football team, the volleyball team, the school play, whatever it is, and if they all are being successful, then you're really on a roll because you've got an awful lot of kids involved in things in which they feel connected to the school and feel successful.
That's where you want the success to be. If it's, if you're going to have it from here, you know, from the administrators, you know, all the, all of you, then it'll go down. You know, you want it to, it's got to be everywhere.
Right. Absolutely.
This is the first time I recall this much conversation about school activities and extracurriculars. I am thrilled.
I think we see examples every day of how building a team in our adult lives, I mean, again, talk, go back to the third grade reading in the summer school, that's all about because people know how to communicate and build a team. No one entity did it, a variety of entities came together. So, if we can teach our kids that at a young age and reinforce that through high school, it just leads to better things when they're adults and better accomplishment and the ability to collaborate and work together.
Well, I just want to take a moment. I want to congratulate the superintendent. I really do think, in the short time that he's been here, it would have been disastrous in my mind if he had started implementing right out of the chute. I think it's important that everyone in the district, all the stakeholders in the district, understand that it's not ready, shoot, aim. We've got to put some thought to it. I share your impatience around that. But, you know, the culture we're creating is really one that should be contrary to that. I mean, we know there are certain things, there are not a lot. There are certain things that do require some, some in-depth study. But, you know, as we talked about, we're going to create a culture here where we're going to encourage people to try new things and to not be concerned with failure. The challenge, and I think that in talking with Stan, you know, we're looking forward to the beginning of the school year, the chance to bring all of the team together so they hear a common message about, you know, how it's different. Because that will be, that will be a milestone and kind of an area where we collectively kind of bury the stake and say, you know, going forward, this is different. But as administrators, and particularly in this building, it's a new world because we're going to ask a lot of questions, we're going to ask people to be engaged, we're asking them to think, you know, in a different way. And that's going to force us in this building to approach that with a whole new, you know, fresh, open-mindedness, I think. There's no silly questions, there's no silly ideas. We've got to embrace each and every one of them. We won't do each and every one of them, but we've got to create a way, and I know that's paramount to what you're trying to do, Stan, is create that culture where people know they can bring those forward. They buy into the, they buy into the strategic plan in terms of the outcomes. That's what we want. And so, once, that vibe you talked about, I see that in elementary schools, I see that in the middle schools, not across the board, that's our goal. That's our aspiration, I hope to see that everywhere. We see pockets of it. So, we know that, that exists out there and we know it's being nurtured and it's being fed. The key is how do we map that across the whole district? I think a solid strategic plan where everybody can, can see the outcomes, they can see the role they play and know the impact that they can have on it is a, is a big thing. This is a good start. I think everybody will agree. This is a good start. This isn't, this isn't inclusive everything that gets done next year, but certainly it is some of the ones that I think jump off the page that we've talked about and that you can directly tie to the strategic plan. And I think once you get that kind of, that kind of color and light shone on a plan like this, that's where people get behind it. I think that's where people get excited, they get energized, they get engaged. That's where the fun really starts.
Absolutely.
And that's where everybody around in this building and across the district really ought to be, be excited and we ought to be prepared to embrace that excitement as we kick off the new school year.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, thank you. I agree. I think that to not have a, to be purposeful calls is to have a strategic plan. But once we get past that, I mean, clearly the, the eyes of the district will be on us. I mean, was that just what Stan said, to get to be the superintendent? Or is this what we're going to still be doing in four years and five years and on and on, hopefully? So, that is the mode at which we're going to operate from here on out.
Any other comments?
Is this the other items section or are we on to the strategic plan? Are we?
No, any other comments on the strategic plan? Great. Just thank you, Stan and Stan.
Can I have another item?
So do I.
So do I.
You go first.
Who goes first?
Me.
I, along with many in the community, recently learned that, you know, we, the city once again, won the American Cities Award. And I certainly applaud that outcome and people are excited. But I think one of the things that has been somewhat underreported is the district's significant involvement in that plan. And I just want to take a moment and herald the fact that the district, you know, that award was given largely because of a plan to improve third grade reading. And our district, I know, was involved greatly in the creation of that plan and will be very much in the forefront of the implementation of that plan. And I just think that, you know, as much as we celebrate the city winning it, yeah, it's a collective, a lot of people contributed to it, but the district did their part big time. And I just want to make sure that that doesn't get forgotten and lost. So, I appreciate and applaud the district's efforts to bring that once again to Dubuque.
Thank you. George?
Yeah, I had a little comment about what goes on in the summer with education. And we recently, Governor Brandt said was in the news about wanting to move the start date back on schools. I don't know. I think it's met universally as a bad idea from people that are involved in education and from parents. And, and I guess I want to stress that there's a lot of education that goes on in the summer. Just because school gets out, that doesn't mean education stops. And so, I just, I'm kind of on Facebook, monitoring my kids, doing things, but just seeing the things that come across that of educational programs going on in the summer. I'd just like to touch on a few, this isn't a complete list, but the Dubuque Public Library reading programs. Girl Scouts, my daughter, we're out at Girl Scout Summer Camp at Little Cloud. UD for Kids is going on. The Every Child Every Promise Program with the city at Audubon School for reading, for kids to, to help get on track with reading. We've got a whole slew of Dubuque Leisure Services Program, the Grandview Gallup, over 200 elementary school kids running in that a couple of weeks ago. Dubuque Y has a whole set of programs, including a Girls on the Run Program, which talks about, you know, many of these programs not only deal with activities and education, but also deal with character. And that's one of those that involves, has a big character component. The Dubuque Colts are off and the Colt Cadets, Dubuque Girls Independent Softball League, Laura's Sports Camp, and Farrell's Fitness Club. Several of us are involved with, at Farrell's. But they have a teen program going on this summer, fitness, education, nutrition, and character. And I think one of the challenges is a lot of these programs go on, some of these programs involve costs and transportation logistics. And when we talk about engaging the community, community partnerships, some of that has got to be, how can we, how can we make it so that kids that don't have the logistics, don't have the fee that they need to pay, don't have the transportation, can take part in many of these activities that a great majority of our community can? And, you know, this is a list of 10 or 12 programs, but I mean, there are literally hundreds of programs going on. And one of our challenges, one of our community's challenges is how can we make these programs available to all kids? So, a lot of education, a lot of programming goes on in the summer, it just doesn't go on in front of a teacher.
I would just say, all kids, and I appreciate that, but all kids doesn't necessarily mean just money. Sometimes there's learning difficulties or behavioral issues.
Whatever those barriers are, we need to try to find ways
And I think that needs to be factored in as well.
So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anything else? I have one other item that needs some action. I've got a, I've got a letter, excuse me, from Keith Ray, the new president and CEO of the Dubuque Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. A request from the newly formed board, they're, they're asking that the Dubuque Community School Board appoint one of their members to the new advisory committee that will serve underneath the board of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is a 25-person group made up of representatives of local government, travel industry in the tri-state area. They meet every other month, starting on July 11th at noon in the Chamber Boardroom. We're looking for representation from the school board to help with that.
I'll do it.
Matt? Okay, great. I'm on, I'm on that board, but I'm not on the advisory committee, so.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Matt Strilo to the Dubuque Visitors and Convention Bureau Advisory Board.
Second.
Moved in second and to appoint Mr. Strilo as a representative to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Committee. All in favor?
Discussion, discussion.
This guy shouldn't have stopped me. We could have been done by now.
Have we seen his last three tax retirements? Have we?
All right. All in, quick, all in favor before we lose our nominee.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion curious? Thank you, Matt. Is there anything else? Hearing none, we are adjourned.